Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 27, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:03 PM and we are meeting tonight at the Lakeville Police Station. We have Lake Cam recording this evening. Is anyone else recording? Hearing none. We do have a member attending via Zoom this evening, so we will be taking a roll call attendance. I'm gonna wait until Jack gets in here. We can start with David on Zoom if you do roll call attendance.
David Lodge here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
John Cabral here.
McEckern, here.
Wilga, aye.
Lodge, aye.
And we also have our town planner Nancy Durfee with us this evening. So just because we have someone on Zoom, we do have to take a roll call vote for every vote that we take as well. Agenda item number one. We have a public hearing for 43 Main Street. This was actually, we did take the vote on the, enclosed this hearing last meeting, but we did have a question regarding the Mylar. Nancy.
So for site plan review, you don't need to have a Mylar paper is fine. It's when you're doing a lot line change, like the definitive plan, which they provided with Mylars, or an 81X, or an ANR. ANRs are always changing lot lines, so those need to be recorded with Mylar in perpetuity. The paper is a harder material and lasts longer in paper. So the site plan is in paper and the Mylars are for the definitive plan are here to be signed tonight. And you have a final decision as well.
Okay, cool. Do we have to take a vote to allow them to submit the site plans on paper? No? Okay, so it's all set? We don't really have to do anything with this item? All right. Moving on. Agenda item number two. We have a public hearing, site plan review for 10 Harding Street, continued from January 6, 2025, upon the application for site plan review and approval submitted by Lex Development, Inc. for the construction of a proposed 13,300 square foot building, associated driveways, parking area, and utilities. Possible vote. We do have a request from the applicant to continue to March 13, 2025.
I'll make a motion to continue the 10 Harding Street till March 13, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, all in favor?
Wilga, aye.
McEckern, aye.
Cabral, aye.
Lodge, aye.
Lodge, aye.
Thank you. Agenda item number three. Public hearing, special permit, 160 Bedford Street, continued from February 13, 2025. Request for special permit under section 270-7.4, number 12, to allow a commercial parking facility. We do have a request from this applicant to continue as well. This one is to continue to March 27. Is that correct, Nancy? For that date? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue 160 Bedford Street to March 27, 2025?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Wilga, aye.
McEckern, aye.
Cabral, aye.
Lodge, aye.
All right. Motion carries. Agenda item number four. Public hearing for 19 Main Street upon the application for a site plan review, approval submitted by C.D. Dankwitz Realty, Inc. for the construction of a proposed mixed-use retail and business development comprised of two buildings and associated site improvements. We do have a...
Yep. As you...
Yep.
All right. The notice of public hearing. The Lakeville Planning Board pursuant to the Town of Lakeville Code bylaws, Chapter 270, Section 270-6.7, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 27, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing will be to receive information and public comment on the following site plan review application. 19 Main Street, the applicant C.D. Dankwitz Realty, Inc. seeks site plan review and approval for the construction of proposed mixed-use retail and business development comprised of two buildings and associated site improvements. The front building will be occupied by retail and service businesses. The rear building will house small business enterprises that require office and storage service areas. The application and assorted documents can be viewed in the Planning Department by appointment. Would someone like to make a motion to open this hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the 19 Main Street public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, all in favor?
Wilga, aye.
McEckern, aye.
Cabral, aye.
Lodge, aye.
Lodge, aye.
Public hearing is open. In our packet, we do have some comments. We have a memo from the Select Board. The Select Board discussed at their February 24, 2025 meeting. Two of the comments were the board would like to see if there is a way to partner with adjoining parcel to create a central access/egress and the board would like to express their concerns on increased traffic in the Bridge Street/Main Street intersection from the development. We also have a memo from the Fire Chief. The Fire Chief says this document has been submitted as Fire Department comment on proposed construction located at 19 Main Street. The size of the proposed buildings indicates the requirement for the installation of fire sprinkler systems. The presence of these sprinkler systems will trigger the need for Fire Department connections on the buildings. The location of these connections affects the configuration and design of the site plan submittal. The submittal that must contain the location of the sprinkler connections must be approved by the Fire Chief per the code. There are no other concerns about the submission at this time. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Lawrence Soder. Professional engineer, Solar Engineering Associates, offices at 1615 Bedford Street, New York. With me this evening are the owners of the property, C.D. Alfred Dankwitz, are in the back there. And... How are you doing? All right. So tonight, we're here to talk to you about property which is designated as 19 Main Street and it is a portion of what used to be the Lakeville Hospital Complex. And I have some areas here that might help in terms of just acclimating yourself as to where we're talking and how related to the original...
Thank you.
Yeah. A couple more.
Thank you.
You didn't tell me it had to be agile. Here's another one here.
Thank you.
So that area that's highlighted in blue is the area in which we're talking about this project. And as you can see, it also intersects what used to be the original access driveway that went to the hospital complex. And you'll see that on the plan when we talk about it. So the property obviously fronts on 19 Main Street. It's across from Bridge Street. It's probably easier if I work from this display first and then I can go along and have more detail there. Okay, so this is a assessment map, 60 Lot 1N. And as I indicated, it's owned by the Dankwitzes. The zoning for the property is in business and a mixed-use overlay, which I'm sure you've been dealing with. It's three acres in size. And it's currently, as shown on that aerial there, it's currently, there's some lawn areas, some tree areas. There's a large parking lot, a former parking lot that's part of the property. And the remains of the main access driveway that used to come into the complex. The fact, the way that the layout of the roadway is, is that there's actually a MassDOT indent right there. And so we'll be utilizing that same access point, which was already approved at one time by MassDOT. The project, as we're proposing it, comprises of two buildings. Okay? And of course, in my office, you'd think that we'd start with the street being Building A and the one in the back, Building B. But it's not that way. Okay, so we got, so here we are. And Bridge Street is on this side over here. And this is Building B, which is the one towards the front. That's the one that has the most visibility. The goal here is to have a four-unit building. That could change depending on what the needs are in terms of when somebody approaches us for a rental. And so, but that building itself, our 80-foot deep units right now showing 40 feet across. So that's about a 12,000 square foot building at that point. It has, the rear building, which is the Building A, is turned in the other direction. It is also, it's 80 feet across and it's 150 feet in length. And that is laid out as 10 separate, potentially 10 separate bays, small bays, for like small business type use. But obviously, it'd be flexible enough that should somebody come along and wants to have either a front-to-back and two bays there or double width, that there is the ability to actually change and go down to fewer number of units. But the maximum number of units that would be in this building would be 10, 10 units. The way that it's laid out, as I said, the access would be following that same driveway access point that was from the original drive. We're talking about a 24-foot aisles for circulation. We've done, actually, I have even an illustration for fire trucks in terms of how fire trucks are able to get around the complex. And then also, it would be, it would have parking in front of the first building here. On the sides and on the rear of the site, there would be also additional parking to meet the requirements for, to meet zoning and to meet the needs of the tenants. The utilities on the site would be, we would be bringing in water, both for domestic and for fire protection. So in answer to the question raised by the Fire Department, it's our intentions that they would be sprinkled buildings. And therefore, I think that that was what he was alluding to in his comment letter that we received today. We would have a, we've done percolation testing. Leaching field for the, for the both buildings combined would be in this area here of the site. The flow from each building would go to a separate septic tank. Pump chamber in the middle, pump chamber pushing out up there and that's where the actual leaching system would be. The other illustration, which is a little bit easier to see, some of the utilities. So as I was saying, each one would have a septic tank. So flow would be directed to the septic tanks from there to a pump chamber and then out here. As far as drainage on the site, drainage is going to be collected. As you can see, we've got laid out in here a collection system, bringing it down towards the front. And underneath that parking lot in the front and in front of that, we'd be going through oil grit separators for water quality. And as you can see, there's a significant drainage system that is proposed for the front. That consists of 187 cul-de-sac chambers in order to meet the 100-year storm requirements in that area. So we'd have deep sump catch basins and then we'd be conveying it to the front there, oil grit separators, 5,000 gallon, each one of those is a 5,000 gallon tank, and then into the chambers. So as far as the building in the back, because it's going to have overhead doors, so there's basically is a pass door and an overhead door in front of this. And when you have that, you need to have provisions for a holding tank. If you're on a septic system, you're not on sewer. If you're on sewer, you can use an MDC trap. But if you're on a septic system, you have to have a holding tank. And so there'll be a holding tank for a drain system that would be in front of those doors that are on one side here. That's the tank on this side. It would be similarly, there'd be one on the backside for the drains that are in front of those overhead doors. And the way that works is if their flow gets up to a certain level, alarm system is indicated and you have to pump out the contents of the holding tank. That's to make sure that none of it gets out into the environment. As far as the architectural design, we have not engaged architectural plans at this point. We wanted to give you an idea though of what we have in mind. These illustrations, which I have some copies for you that you can look at.
Yeah, our architect is on Zoom, so...
What's that?
I said, our architect member is on Zoom right now. So I'm sure he'll like to get a look at it. And we do, we do require those to be filed.
If those all you have, then...
Once you have the paperwork.
He submitted with a PS2 copy of that particular...
Well, there might be, there might be...
Thank you.
Okay. I have other stuff.
I'll take your... So this is what you're...
So this is, this is, I'll give you the locations here. These are buildings that were found in, one of them's in Carver. That's Erickson's Ice Cream. That's a smaller building. And then the other one with the, also has, the ones with the, similar to those bays that we talked about in the back, it's also a building that's on that same property. And then there's also another illustration that's in that packet of a building that's in Bridgewater, on Bedford Street in Bridgewater. And it's the, this is not, you know, it's to assure you that what's intended here is a nice design. You know, we wanted to look good. We wanted to work well for both the town and for, actually for marketing and so forth. It needs to look good. And so this is what's planned for the type of building that we're looking to try to put here. Other site features that we have shown on the full set of plans that are there is that we show site lighting, which is a downward design, the way that you would have no stray lighting going off to other properties. We show dumpster locations on the plan itself. We show areas for snow storage. They're not on this sheet, I think they're on the other one. But they basically identify clouded areas where snow storage would occur. And then landscaping is shown on, a lot of those details are all on Sheet 4, if I can get the Sheet 4. So on this sheet here, we show, I showed those dumpster areas. We show the snow storage areas. We show the lighting, the locations of the lighting. The lights are shown in the islands and so forth. And there's a detail in the back that shows the light standard. The light standard in here, which is showing, obviously, a base construction downward light. And there's a fixture type identified, which provides for that downlight. There is, we provided for ADA ramps wherever we have sidewalks. And we show the sidewalks along the building. And pretty much, that's kind of the main overview of what it is that we're proposing here. We understand that you have a peer review process in which, I don't know if the plans have already gone there or not. I don't know what is the timing of those kind of responses and so forth as well.
Yes, we have sent them along. I believe. So it's been signed. The check has been cashed, so we've already paid. So I don't know what Beals and Thomas will provide, but I can get you a timeframe. I'm not sure that we'll have it for the next meeting, but I'm certain that we'll have it for the 27th. Or hopefully before the 27th.
So Apex is Beals, the former...
Oh, you mean Apex then?
You meant Apex?
I'm sorry, yes, Apex.
Apex. Which I'm not familiar with.
Environmental Partners?
That is Apex? Oh, I have dealt with them. In East Bridgewater, a couple of projects.
And they're very familiar with this site.
Yep.
Because everything else that's been going on around has been handled by them, so I'm confident.
Yeah, no, we did a large complex in East Bridgewater in which they were the review consultant for that one. So they're probably very familiar with Rebecca from my office as well. She's the lead engineer. I'm the old Giza. Okay? It's my 50th year as a civil engineer.
Congratulations.
So we, you know, basically, this is where we are in terms of the overview of it. We put a lot of time into making sure the design addresses your regulations and we hope that the comments come back and reflect that as well. But whatever comments that the board may have or the public, I'd be glad to address them at this point.
Okay. Lenny Board? Question, comment?
You have a first, go ahead.
Sure, just a couple of quick things. First off, I really appreciate the detailed plans that you have given us, including the design, which looks great. So I really think it fits within the character of the town and what we look for. In terms of street signage, was that indicated on the plan? And if so, what were you folks thinking with street signage?
As far as what, street...
Signage.
Signage?
Signage? Or in terms of a sign for the project itself?
No, in terms of what businesses will be there, occupying the spaces and so forth.
I don't, I don't know as though, I don't know. And Cindy, you may be able to tell us what you're envisioning as far as... There's no one right now that has actually signed up to be a tenant at this point.
But down the road, as...
I think, I think probably, you know, more or less the same kind of signage that's, you know, that's within like the area where offices and all of that area.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be...
Versus out back. I don't necessarily think I'm looking...
Yeah. We're not looking to do anything that's outside of the Lakeville requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I'm looking to do a sign for that back building. Do you think?
No.
No. It's really more or less going to be the front building. I do have a couple of ideas and people that I've chatted with that are prospecting the front building. So it's something that they would be signage for, but I think I would, you know, possibly want to sign. If you go by that good street in Bridgewater, they did a really great job next to the...
It's near the bank, near the Hobo One Bank up that way.
Yeah, it's next to the Vets Club.
You mean this?
Yeah.
The one shown here? I think it's like medical office, right?
Well, the Skinplicity or something like that. It's like a facial thing and then a hair salon. It's just like a really nice, crisp look.
Very tasteful, the ways.
One of our typical conditions is that your signs have to comply with our bylaws.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. We're not proposing to do anything outside of...
And if you don't mind, just so, because we're on, we do stream on Facebook through Lake Cam and YouTube, so that you're probably heard at a microphone. These little microphones can pick you up if you don't mind. You can have a seat?
No, that's fine. So yeah, really, whatever. I mean, I'm trying to make it look nice. You know, if that's like, you know, a sign on the building, I mean, that's what we did in Bridgewater at our building. Just something a little bit more detailed.
Some of the tenants will be looking to have visibility, obviously, on the building and then on a pylon sign. But everything will be done so that it meets the requirements.
I screenshot, very welcome here, so when I saw that, I...
Well, I wasn't specifically, and so the company that we are going to has designed those buildings. And so we kind of went to where they already had buildings to see the quality of workmanship. So we have seen it and they, you know, do a good job. And, you know, as far as doing the building, we're gonna probably add a little bit of extra, you know. It's gonna cost a little bit more, but it's just aesthetically more pleasing, you know, to the town.
And we do ask for the building elevations to be included with the submittals so that we can have it filed, once you tie it down.
Right.
And the only other thing, and this is more so for the board, is the leaching field that's on there. Do we know how close that is to...
So Board of Health will...
The Board of Health will, okay.
Yeah, Board of Health was out there witnessing tests with us and our system has to be a minimum of 10 feet away from a property line, the leaching portion of it. And that's how, we've done everything to comply with that.
And do we think there's gonna be restrooms in the, possibly those 10 units?
Absolutely, each unit.
Oh, yeah, everything has, everything's...
I mean, what I'm envisioning there is obviously, you know, the whole project that's going on out back. You know, people, you know, the housing and whatnot.
Oh, right.
What I'm envisioning is possibly contractor bays for people who...
Small incubator kind of stada.
Yeah, like plumbers, electricians or what have you, somewhere to put their stuff to, to kind of, you know. So will there be like a lot of people coming in and out in the back portion? I just really envision like that self-employed. You know, that's what I'm envisioning. But I did have a question. I think there were two questions that were first stated, one for the Fire Department. Obviously, we're gonna do sprinklers, no issue with that. But the first one, can you repeat what that question was or what that concern was?
Traffic.
Yeah, but who was it requested by?
This is the Select Board. So when we get a site plan review, we send it off to all the boards and committees and ask for their feedback. And this was the feedback that we received. So the first one is the Select Board would like to see if there's a way to partner with the adjoining parcel to create a central access egress.
Which is the back land, correct?
Well...
Which is the...
So it wouldn't be the back. So the 55-plus component is gonna be egressing onto 79. The, I would think this is actually more...
So I have talked to Rhino Capital a number of times. I actually originally had thought that I would just sell them the land so they could utilize what's already there, which would make far more sense than what, I think, what they're, you know, going through. But I think they had already gone through the process. So I have talked to them at some point. And, you know, I think it would have to be...
But we don't really know what that, I mean, we understand the spirit of that cooperation of that. But I don't think we know any details.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? We're not, we're not adverse. We're not trying to throw a fence around and say, no, there's no way to work with anyone to do that.
I wouldn't object to it, but I'd have to have a conversation with them about that.
And I should point out to you that our company's familiar with this area because we did the funeral home.
Yeah.
So you know, I'm assuming that you know that Bridge Street, it's been very famous around here because it's, there's been a fatality at that light. And the state also had designated funds towards putting in a light. Obviously, it's a state road, not a town road. So this is probably something that they'd be looking at to partner, to bring that to fruition.
But I think that when they were looking at lights, I mean, when they were looking at, they were looking at... they, I mean, when they were looking at, they were looking at a lot more volume feeding into that area.
I think that it was originally stop and shop that had...
Yeah, just that was, you were talking about a volume of...
But that, so that was even...
Before?
Yep, so that's even, regardless of the stop and shop, the state had actually designated funds about three years ago to go towards...
Are they still thinking that there's going to be a set of lights there?
That, that's something that I think has to be...
I think, I think so.
Now that you're here with this plan, with us, and you're, you're the owner of that parcel that is right across from Bridge Street, because Rhino's response has been that they don't own that property, but if there is a way that we can, you know, take a look at it and see what...
I'm open for conversation, absolutely.
Okay, excellent.
Because I think it'll benefit whoever is going to put their business, everybody's gonna benefit.
Yep.
So...
But having said that, though, I mean, Rhino would have to be in a position to offset area that we've lost to be able to recover what we need.
So I think, I think it would probably benefit from multiple people in the same room having a conversation, because I know that, from what Rhino had said, and I don't want to get into the weeds on anything, any other topic, but there's been certain conversations with the select board in regards to that property, so maybe there is something that can be worked out, which I think we should look into arranging a conversation of getting...
I don't believe they ever contacted me.
They've, I've had multiple, yeah, I've had multiple conversations, yeah.
I'm, I'm very happy that you're...
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm amicable to that, just because I, like I said, I think it can work out for everybody involved.
Right, I mean, having multiple egress in an already, you know, taxed, traffic-wise location that we know it's, there's been a fatality, and the state recognizes it, it's just a matter of seeing what kind of collaboration...
So I didn't realize it was a fatality, that's, that's terrible.
Yeah, it was about, I want to say two and a half years ago now.
Yeah, but multiple accidents.
Yeah, accidents all the time, but one that was there.
Well, I think especially with the lights that have been going there.
So their, their property is this line in here, and in here, they don't control...
They're all the way back.
...in here, so everything, the only common area that we have with them is about 134 feet here, or...
It's right here, Larry.
They have, they have even towards your north.
So what happened is when we first bought this land, we didn't own this, we didn't, we owned more, and so I renegotiated and got more frontage, and they took a little bit back. So, so essentially...
They call it dog, like, that goes around your property.
Yeah, so basically, they wanna, they, what they're asking is if we can go in here and go over here, which...
We'll leave that in your court, that if you want...
Well, we'll, we'll see if we can get some...
And we discussed that at one point, so...
Now, the only thing that I'm gonna suggest there, though, is if in some way those talks could happen before
Peer Review.
any kind of re-peer view happens in earnest, because we don't want to be having to review something that might change.
So you said they weren't sent yet, right? Or were they?
Everything's been sent.
They have been sent?
Yeah.
Can we send an email tomorrow, just to put it on hold?
Yeah.
Until a meeting is held, just say that there's gonna be a meeting.
Yep, and you're okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. But continuing on, John, do you have any questions?
Have you all set yet?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Business use, right, this is business, this is business zone?
Yep.
You list out industrial in your parking, is there industrial?
Because there's really no category to, for these businesses that are that type, it was hard to actually identify for parking requirement, so that's the only reason why it's called out that way, because there isn't...
You mean, like, in the...
Unless there was a better category for us to show it in, we felt as though that those, those are business incubators, basically, a small service.
Right, because like, you can't do any auto repair in there, because that would be all, you'd buy a special permit in a business zone.
Those are all things that you can, that you can condition in your approval.
No, that, because I saw the holding tanks, that's my first thing, was like, what do you guys, you...
Well, the holding tank is a plumbing, a plumbing code requirement, that as soon as you trip the threshold of you've got a overhead door...
Spot is big enough to fit a vehicle inside, you have to put in.
Right, right, right. That's why it's there.
What was it that you thought that they would do with the holding tanks? I didn't...
Well, no, because you can't have auto repair shops in a business zone without a special permit. There's certainly areas, even like when they, you start the contractor bays as well, because those are listed under industrial as special permit required in the business occupancy as well, when you have a plumbing or, I think, I was looking that up, but it was...
Spray paint.
Spray paint or plumbing, electrical shops that are gonna be doing repair stuff in there is special permit under business occupancy, under business zoning, sorry. So again, just...
So there may be some conditions that are gonna require coming back on the details of a particular tenant.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, that's what I mean, I know, I know right now, you said you have no tenants, so it's just something like that, but just, when I said, I said when I saw the holding tanks, I thought, same thing, auto repair, and, because it's a...
Yeah, tell me what I can have in mind.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, that's, um...
Yeah, so we could...
As a primary use, yeah, accessory, yeah.
Just make sure that we do a condition that covers that, and if anything changes in the future.
No, that was really it, I just, I saw that and it jumped out at me, as...
Yeah. It's a good question to ask, because the people at home, if they see warehouse that, you know, their antenna's gonna go up, so. Jack, did you have any?
Yeah. You have been a couple, the type of renter or clientele is basically service-oriented, do people like plumbers and carpenters?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be that, I guess, you know, my husband's a contractor, and in my mind, I think, like, there's so many people that we've met along the years that end up getting bays. I mean, it could be, I don't know, maybe...
It's really service, we're thinking with the population that's occurred and what's gonna continue, that there is more service kind of based kind of businesses.
Single-story buildings?
Yes.
ADA parking?
Yes.
And you being in compliance with our exterior signage and exterior...
Absolutely.
Architecture, okay. I'm fine.
David, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, not directly, other than, yeah, we all need to see kind of more definitive preliminary architectural plans, with an idea of the materials you're proposing and using, and all, I mean, unfortunately, I can't see what you're, what you brought in for samples.
We can put something aside in the planning office for you, so you can pick it up.
Yeah, yeah, what a beck. And, and, and definitely, you know, doing something about lining up that entrance with Bridge Street a little bit better. I noticed there's a little bit of an offset there, and I would think that, that everybody would kind of want, want that lined up if there's a future traffic light going in.
By lined up, what do you mean?
It is pretty, it is pretty lined up.
I, I think it is pretty lined up, but, I mean, it kind of, oh, I see what you're saying, so going...
It's close, but it's, there, there is just a little bit of an offset there.
Gotcha.
But that's all, obviously, something that, if, you know, if that's something you can work on.
I mean, that's, that's doable in terms of turning that a little bit?
Yeah.
You guys don't anticipate, like, massive, I know we've done this before, there was probably like, a lot of 18-wheelers coming out there, and it's gonna be tough, they're already coming down Bridge Street, coming from like Ocean Spray, so when you have, trying to turn to make another someone out there, I don't, not by your, maybe delivery.
It's pretty much offset, it's more like the center line of Bridge Street is more with the, does that be the northern edge of the, or the east, the eastern edge of our driveway right now, so it's like about a half a driveway off, maybe?
Hmm.
So, but we got room within that area to be able to, to shift it over a little bit, if that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Which I have is, there's sufficient...
Yeah, you know, that, that, you know, what, what you're discussing with Rhino, of, you know, if there's kind of fewer driveways, and particularly there's a traffic light going out there, you know, 200 apartment units back behind you, is, is, is some traffic going in and out.
It makes sense.
Right. Yep, so we'll put a hold on the peer review temporarily. We'll see if we can get
Set up a meeting?
A meeting together.
And who, who would you like to see at that meeting?
So I'd like a representative from Rhino, the select board, I think it would make sense to have, yeah, oh, yeah, town administrator, zoning enforcement officer, I don't know, fire chief?
Yeah.
Or police chief as well, or DPW, I think...
Maybe the Board of Health to...
Board of Health, yep.
Dan's issue.
Yeah. Regarding, what would be the Board of Health issue?
So...
Just to, just to clarify.
Just to clarify, the leaching field in terms of, because it is on the, it is on the line, and I'm not exactly sure where their leaching field is and so forth, so I just want to make sure everything is in compliance, that's all.
Yeah, the Title V requirements, I have five feet from a property, I mean, 10 feet from a property line, and we're in excess of that, so...
Okay.
Well, so I don't know, I don't know if Board of Health will want to part in the conversation with Rhino, though, I don't know.
No, I think it might be premature, I mean, I think that they're...
It should be, you know, regarding road and access, that's why I thought maybe fire chief and police chief.
Okay.
But if they don't even, if they, if they want to be involved, but otherwise, definitely someone from Rhino, select board, TA.
Mate.
Mate, and, and the fire, yep.
Is it okay if I contact Rhino myself as well? Or would you rather?
Yeah.
If, if you can...
Yeah, because we'd like to have an idea of what they, they may be asking.
I have a contact with them, so I just want to see what time.
So we might have a better way to kind of toss things around, that way.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Negotiate a few things.
Now, you had asked a question about fire truck access.
Yeah.
That red line is the, the truck access around...
Okay, good, that's easy, fine.
Those are the turn radius.
No receipt is that?
I don't know if that was in, that's not in the packet, that was a separate one that we...
Could you please send that along as well?
We can?
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure you would like to see it as well as peer review would.
It may, maybe a moot point if we remove some things, but certainly.
Right, right, sure. So, maybe whole?
Well, send it along so we can include it in the package, if, if the meeting from Rhino goes nowhere, we want, we want to get them going right away, so again, just, if you have it already done, if it's not...
And then, when you said lighting, do you have a photometric plan as well?
We do not have a photometric plan at this point.
Okay. It is something we...
That would be, we would be doing that through the architectural contract.
Okay, so you can get, get that?
We'll get that done, too.
Okay.
All right. You, you did, I mean, it sounds pretty thorough for a first presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. But let's figure out a date to continue to?
Nancy, I would just like to ask a couple of questions. On the traffic, did you do any traffic study or run any numbers as to how much traffic you would see?
We have not done a traffic evaluation, we are not a traffic consultant, but, uh...
Has Rhino?
We have not done that at this point.
Has Rhino done a traffic one? I'm sure, they asked of, yeah, I'm sorry, I was here when that came.
Well, now this will obviously be additional traffic generated from this side.
It's a different type of situation.
That will be coming into your place.
Right, okay.
You hope.
Oh, they will. And, and, and as John mentioned, too, trailers, I'm assuming with the construction bays, did you take that into consideration for turning radii?
We've done it, so for fire trucks, it's more...
Right, because you have, you have a number of access points where trailers will be coming in and out, is it congested already on Main Street? Just wondering if you took that into consideration on the radii coming out onto Main Street, as well as getting around the side?
The DOT requirements is what we didn't do.
Okay.
It's DOT radius.
And I was, Nancy was saying, is there a timeline what we're gonna put on, where these trail trucks can come in, because, you know, we went through this with the hospital, the people we're concerned with, the backup beepers and the lights and all this congestion, so is there a timeline that you would put on, trail trucks can come in or come out after 10 o'clock?
At night?
Big at 10.
Oh, like, nothing before 6:00 AM and nothing after 9?
Typical, typical condition.
We'll have to, we'll...
I guess Michelle's...
We can look at that and propose something to you.
Okay.
I, I know that we run into problems on some, sometimes when somebody tickles, comes in to pick up a dumpster, and they tend to come in early when they do it, sometimes, you know?
Yeah.
Considering there's gonna be a bunch of residential...
And speaking of the dumpster, will you have screening as well?
Yes, that's a screen dumpster.
Okay.
Shows it.
And on the turning radii, I don't see a spacing in foot where it turns at the back of the, the site, where you have the construction bays, could you add that?
Add the radius in the back?
Add, add the feet between, on the radii of both of the back corners.
So they're on, it's on, it's on the sheet number four?
Yeah, it's on four.
I'm on four, and I don't, I don't have it between the edges from the, from the edge of the property to the edge of where you're going to put, I, I don't...
Those are all 24-foot aisles.
Okay, all around the radii as well?
Everything is 24-foot aisles, the main, the main.
Oh.
You're looking for the, have the dimension for the, you know, so up there it says 20, you see it, dimension 24?
I I see it here, I just didn't see it on the turning radii. Okay, it just it wasn't marked on the.
Yeah, there's nothing less than a twenty-four foot aisle anyway.
You marked out the twenty-four, if it was at twenty-four, the else is beyond that.
That's inside, inside.
Would you be open to running some traffic numbers um for this site as well? For the type of businesses that you're using?
We would not be, but uh we'll have to, we we can discuss how how, I guess. What has been done, and maybe you can give us the benefit of who has actually done evaluation here before.
Um I would not know.
Was McMahon involved?
Not that I'm aware of, but Rhino has done the traffic.
Yeah, whoever did it, I mean, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel here either, if this, if there has been uh some evaluation of it.
Well, maybe when you're talking to Rhino, you can ask about what their traffic study.
Did you get that traffic study?
Well, I mean, it's public, it's public.
Yeah.
Um does, did you have more questions? Uh anyone in the audience, did anyone else have questions? So in order to give us some time for me, um where would the landscaping?
This is where the the two first two buildings are gonna be, a Rhino, right?
The two.
With Rhino stats, they're gonna put those first, the uh the assisted living and the.
Yeah, it's over here, yeah.
Over further back.
Further over, yeah.
Further back, I mean, I think I saw.
And it does look like you are maintaining and and doing some plantings as well, though, you have some landscaping.
Just wanna make sure that your site is near any of their two two buildings, there should be enough.
I mean, their buildings gotta be set back uh minimums at minimum, and they gotta be doing some insurance and landscaping too.
Sure.
Between, so I'm sure between the two of us, it should be.
Well, the the difference between that is your commercial and their residential more on that side, so that's where that's where that concern comes from, but it's just an open opportunity for you to consider that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as far as a continuance date, um.
Well, you're pushing the peer review out, I wasn't sure that they'd make it to the end of March, so you'd be looking at the beginning of April potentially. If we're gonna try to hold the meeting, um.
And then, yeah, and then wait till after the meeting to then send the peer review and then get comments back from peer review.
Yeah, and I would like to have those comments back obviously before your meeting actually happens.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right.
So um what do you want, a two meeting uh in April?
Two meeting a month.
So I I would say it's probably best to be looking at that second meeting in April because that gives us a chance to get whatever that review is, cuz this, getting to this meeting is gonna take a little bit of time on it.
So is the tenth and the twenty-four?
Ap- yeah, April twenty-fourth would be the second one.
Yeah, I would say the twenty-fourth, because if we get their peer review, I I don't wanna be reading it here. I wanna be able to have it, maybe address some of the comments and see if we can get closer to the finish line.
How much time in advance would you wish to have if I if I if if it was a perfect world?
You asking me or Rebecca in my office?
You.
Yourself.
Rebecca would tell you three months. We like to have a couple of weeks in advance, I mean, if it's possible, but. You know, that gives us a chance to digest it, get it, and you know.
I mean, if you need more time, you can always just contact the office and ask.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I so I don't think it's gonna be a public meeting.
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll probably, I volunteer as a designation from this board.
As long as you don't have a forum, it's not gonna be a public meeting.
Yeah, right.
Right, right, exactly, so, you know, as long as we can get it done, probably.
Probably next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Day or night, what would, what do you think, day or night? I think we could do it during the day based on the the people that are being.
Probably during the day.
Yeah, day time would be better.
Yeah. Daytime?
I like daytime.
Okay. During the next two weeks.
Okay, so let's get a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue the uh nineteen Main Street till April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Will do, I.
Cabral, I.
Roger.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
In April and hopefully sooner. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
He's good, yeah, oh, he's good.
I think great.
Yeah.
Ice cream shop.
That sounds good. Alright, agenda item number five, we have Lakeville Golf Course presentation and discussion, unfortunately, um. He was Derek Maxey did reach out and let us know he is under the weather and he is looking to make this presentation to us on March thirteenth, so um we don't need to continue this because it was just an opportunity for him to informally present to us, but we will hopefully see him on March thirteenth. Uh agenda item number six, review and possible vote to send the following articles to the Select Board as placeholders for the spring town meeting warrant, discussion, possible vote, so we have a number of things that we've been discussing, um possibly bringing to town meeting. Uh one of them is the ADU slash accessory apartment bylaw revisions. So that one, as you all know, we did a, we did bring an ADU bylaw to town meeting in fall. We also have a accessory apartment uh bylaw that is on the books currently. So that is something that we should take a look at, I know Nancy did take a look at and and she expressed that um you know, she thinks that we should probably do away with the accessory apartment, have the ADU replace it, but you said to keep to or to add one thing to the ADU.
Right, so at the at the bottom of the section with which you already approved at the fall town meeting, you would add a number four and then you would just add, and we can pass this through uh Amy and make sure that she is okay with all of these changes, um would be is subject to seven sixty CMR seventy-one uh protected use ADUs, so that way when the state makes any changes, as I'm anticipating that they probably will, that they're not quite done with refining their bylaw yet, so.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Take care.
That this would would cover anything extra that they make changes to and you wouldn't have to go back and keep changing your bylaw. It would cover everything.
Oh, that's good.
So we would wanna take something to town meeting that basically says we're gonna uh remove section, whatever that accessory apartment, I don't have it in front of you, whatever that accessory apartment um section is, remove.
That would be two seventy, seven point eight.
Two seventy.
And it would be removing accessory apartment in its entirety.
And then just making a minor revision to ADU.
Exactly, that will cover you, cover you on both of those.
So that seems like something we should definitely move forward with, if the board is agreeable.
Yeah.
I think we should be able to throw something together as far as sending it off to town council.
I'm gonna send it off to town council, probably much the way you are uh been presented to you and have her give me any suggested changes um necessary to make sure that we're doing legal language that she she would approve of.
Okay.
Alright, the other item, site plan review revision, so this one, thank you Nancy for making some changes to the site plan review by law language, um. And then I thought of it after the fact, after I talked to you yesterday about it, was um I also wanted to add open space under the list.
Yep, so that that did get added um to the to the list.
So we have some new language that includes the ADU, that's good, you picked up on that, you added the ADU that uh came from.
Yeah, I put that in blue so that people knew that was already something that was voted on at the fall town meeting but had not yet passed um AG's office, so we'd haven't reheard back from them as to whether or not that is something that they will allow for you to keep in the bylaw.
Okay.
And I I would, I would almost note that you you could possibly take it out if you wished, because for site plan review, only if you already have uh single family homes as site plan review, which you don't, then that would apply, but if you don't, then you you can't just add it in for just ADUs, does that make sense?
Oh, okay, yeah.
I can double check with legal counsel to make sure I'm correct on that, but that is the way that that I interpret that type of language, so.
Say it again?
So um if you had a site plan review for all single family homes, then you could add in.
Site plan review for ADU?
Yes, but since you don't, then you can't just add in for just ADUs, does that make sense?
Okay, so cuz because it was all new and I just, I read this and I thought.
Right, it says you can do site plan review, absolutely.
Okay, so yeah, that'd be great if we can get clarification on that, if that even needs to be in here then.
Yep. Oh, legal counsel, yeah, I would definitely wanna have. I'm not a, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so don't. It will have to go before town, if we remove it, then it will go back before town as a removal. Uh but the AG's office may remove it, um cuz they may see it as the same as as I did.
So, oh, and I do have the ADU one, I'm sorry, I didn't see that until just now, um the other thing that I started mulling around, of course, after the fact, is if we do this deep dive into our bylaws, should we wait on site plan review, if we're gonna do this deep dive, should we, we should do this?
Just do it.
You think we should, okay, cuz I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna go to town meeting, let's revise site plan review again and then in fall, let's revise this again.
Well, it's only pieces of it.
Okay.
Yeah, your applicability and the review, that will help with the next piece that we're gonna talk about, which is the application.
Okay.
Cuz then you'll have it right into the the bylaws as well and it firms up for anybody who wants to put a site plan application in, that they can also see that it's in your bylaw as well.
Okay.
The inclusion would be the technical review that we discussed a few meetings ago where we bring together the department heads who would be most valuable to the permitting, um the Fire Chief, Police Chief, um Board of Health, Conservation, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer and also um Conservation, I didn't mention them, and I believe, you know, um that would be the grouping. Uh the chairman or someone from the planning board would be welcome to come and hear part of what is happening. What happens is you you have the applicant come in before they're fully developed their plans. That way they can get input from each of the different department heads and in their expertise. Um for example, the Fire Chief on a particular plan like this would wanna make sure those turning radii met the requirements of his apparatus, the the flow, the the fire codes. Uh all of those things could be sussed out and included in the plans before they even get to you. That way you're not waiting, meeting after meeting, continue continued, until you get a final plan that can be approved. It kinda helps through that process and it may slow down the need for them to write many memos to the board because they would have already given all of their input out front, they would get that second chance always when it comes in to make sure that what they asked for was actually incorporated into the plans, cuz you wouldn't want them to have those meetings and then them not meet those requirements as well, so it kind of, it's it's just a a process that helps streamline and helps with the cost for the for the applicant as well, I think, because then they're not fully developed and then going back and rechanging them after they've already been already completed.
I love, I love this idea because, I mean, even residents that came to the joint meeting said, you know, it's great to see you get it together, you should do this more often, I think, and and I think we were in agreement. You know, there was a lack of communication or coordination and and this, this is one more step towards that piece of coordination.
It's just fine tuning what you're already doing, yeah, it's fine tuning, the applications I think will also, when you see the changes in the application, that will also kind of they'll start to make more sense and then the applicant will have to also look at the application, look at the checklist and making sure that they're hitting all of those marks, if I don't have it, then I can deny the application right off the front and send them back so that they're not coming in with mixed pieces and you're not, it it's, it's again, it's more streamlined and it allows for you to make sure that you have all the material when you go to sit down and review it before you even come to a meeting. It's so important to know that it's all clean and already done.
Absolutely.
I'll use the example of the A and R that didn't put the leaching field on the plan. He sa- he would have saved himself another meeting.
Right.
Had he had a checklist and know that he's absolutely has to put that on there, so that's just an example of how that could be improved.
I think he would appreciate it too.
I think he would too. I think why to come back. That's so true.
Alright, so the the next item was the senior overlay district, I was actually kind of hoping to base this on potentially what was presented by Derek.
Derek, yeah.
Um because the reason we were looking at a senior overlay was because of what was presented by Thorndike for the Lakeville Country Club. We haven't seen anything come from them.
Since the presentation was, right?
Correct.
That was what, July?
Yeah, I think they probably saw us in July, it took them a little while to get to Select Board, but then I also, I forwarded the most recent um communication from Lloyd to Nancy and um Andrew because they weren't part of it. So it kinda made the introduction and and he said that they were, you know, working through some sort of a purchase agreement and they'd, you know, reach out when they were ready. So because we haven't heard anything and Derek's not gonna be here until the beginning of March, so I I think we're gonna run out of time for spring.
Yeah.
For this, because I I'm, we're not looking to write a senior overlay, I would rather them write it, have town council review it and then move it forward, so I'm I'm assuming this is gonna be a no. For the senior overlay at this point, maybe for fall, but we'll we'll see.
That sounds great.
I mean, unless they watch this meeting and they're like, no, we wanna get it in by spring.
It's in touch, yeah.
But otherwise, I think.
Rapidly approaching.
Right, exactly. We have, I think it's only two, two meetings before the it closes?
What, what date does it close?
I don't recall.
April fourteenth?
So we have two meetings left, yeah, two months is it?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we'll have three, April tenth.
But that's just barely making it.
Just for senior housing.
Okay, so.
They're over there on one five, that's unbelievable.
So the next one was the OSRD overlay, I only put this on because we had obviously had that discussion, um last I checked with Kathy, we have not heard anything back from um the owner of Rocky Woods. So it doesn't seem like they're willing to come back with an OSRD for a, for us to review or to bring to town meeting.
I don't, I don't think it'll make it for 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 this town meeting.
Well, I mean, if we haven't gotten a response, so that seems to be their response.
Right, so maybe, maybe they would come back, maybe they're just not ready, they're coming back to ZB, or they're going to ZBA on March twentieth, so in their mind, I'm sure they they feel like they might have a little more time um and maybe it would be something that they would look to a special town meeting or something like that, if the if the town and they were still open to that idea.
Well, if they have a meeting with ZBA on the twentieth, I mean, potentially they'll move forward with their forty B.
Correct.
So. And and honest, I don't know what kind of support that would have gotten, just from the response we got at that meeting, so. So for me, I guess the OSRD is not on the table at this point for spring.
Okay.
Um the next item was zoning map revisions, this is something that I know we were talking about, maybe there's some areas where we can look at, I know you're working at getting a zoning map on the GIS, which once once that happens, I feel like it's gonna be a lot easier to work with that map.
Right, so the complicated piece for your zoning map is that it was done a lot in meets and bounds which is surveying the landscape, so you would have to do um degrees, minutes and seconds for each corner and it's written that way in your bylaw as well for each of some of the many districts that you have. Which makes it hard for a, for Serpide to do them because they're not surveyors. So you almost need a specialist to do that, so you need someone who could do the surveying and then also had skill with uh ArcGIS, which is the mapping tool with which that it would needed to be created in. It couldn't be done in their CAD file because CAD doesn't do mapping like that, it would definitely be ArcGIS. Serpide has already agreed that they cannot take much more of the map forward and the map that they have provided thus far is still missing a couple of the overlays, so it's not a complete map, you don't have a complete map now um because it doesn't have, again, a couple of your overlay districts on it, which was dated in twenty eighteen. And you're also missing your water resource protection map, which covers the entire town and it never gets even mentioned, so when people don't even realize that.
It exists.
All of your town is covered by water resource protection and they should be addressing those in all of their applications and they should be providing you with information about any hazardous materials they plan to house on the property based on that overlay. So I have talked to Bridgewater, um I was a student there and my professor is still um a part of the the Bridgewater community and she was willing to send out a proposal to her students. I got the, I got the message like within an hour after she got the proposal from one of uh her students and he turned them a kind of, just the base layer map with all the zones on it in a day.
Wow.
So I have, I I have that.
Really?
Um but um I did talk to um the Building Commissioner and he had some concerns or hesitance about not having it accurate, to have it accurate though costs a town a lot of money, so um I'm so I'm giving you that information, I don't have any answers yet, but this is, this is, he probably literally turned it around in one day and.
And so that's on GIS now?
I have this in GIS, he has it in his GIS files right now, so it has all of your industrial business and, you know, any of those overlays.
So we can zoom in now, we can now zoom in on the GIS map to any.
Right, so area. You, the 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 out, so what I would like to see happen is in the access map that you have, the tools of the mapping would be to put a zoning layer in so that you could look at the parcel and look to see what zone it actually is in, I was just trying to do this with with one sixty.
Yeah.
And trying to figure out what actual zone are all these parcels around one sixty in, so.
Filter or something that.
It's an overlay, so you could like click on, you could click on the parcel layer and then you could click on the zoning map and you'd be able to transparently see through it, so you could see the the lot lines and understand. But to get down to that detail, you would probably need the survey or disclaimer that says, these are not accurate.
Okay.
And you would have to then go to the bylaws for more accurate detailed information on how much of your parcel or all of your parcel, the only way else that I know to fix it is to go back to town meeting and change all of those that are in meets and bounds and put them into parcel data or map block and lot.
How much would that cost?
That, 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 that wouldn't be, it'd just be harder, it's just, it's hard, well, one is very expensive and the other is just more time to do it, right, cuz you'd have to go through each of the, each section and try to just put a district on it, you would vote on on the final districts, then you send it to town meeting and then town meeting would have the final vote vote whether or not these districts met what they had in intended originally.
And see, that almost sound, like I know you said that's.
It's hard, it's more, it's more labor intensive for the town, but it's the cheaper way to go and then you have it.
And it seems like, cuz so then, what, cuz if you're looking at a GIS map, you have the map block and lot right there, so you have that boundary.
And you should have it in your, like, your property record card, like, it should say, and it's in the business district with X Y overlay so that it's, you know what I mean, so all that detail could be pulled in. So that, those are, we're kind of at at the moment, so it's just something to think about and then come up with a solution and maybe bring something like that to fall, we could possibly do it by fall.
So, cuz I was hoping to maybe have some that we could look at, I know when I reached out to Nate, he said maybe one area, but.
Yeah.
It sounds like even that area is confusing as it is.
Right.
Unless maybe you could get some of them to come and meet with you and if they wanna change. Unless maybe you could get some of them to come and meet with you and if they wanna change their zoning, then we could. You know what I mean? Do something like that.
Yes, yeah, I wouldn't want to do it without, you know, having folks input. And you might wanna just, you know, look at the zoning overall, right? And figure out, do these zones actually meet? The requirements of what the town is looking for anyway. So that, I mean, maybe that's an exercise.
We were trying to do it. Dan and Jack actually, you know, were driving around and they were coming back and reporting and. Cause we have these weird little, one little business here, little business there. And then, you know, we have the industrial D or B whatever. You know, one location, that's the only place in town. And then mixed use. Now that that's, you know.
It's special.
And all due respect to all the residents of the town, you take this to the town meeting. Will they be able, within the context of the time, you understand what you're talking about?
I'll, you show them. Like I would give them imagery, right? Not just meets and bounds, no one really would know where that is. Unless you were looking at a surveyed map. Um, so it would make it, might make it simpler for them because when you go back, you go with a more detailed map. With the parcels and the color with which you'd want the district. And we do it in sections.
I think, yeah, because these, well, the majority of these people have, have no involvement in this type of. Language and understanding and all this kind. You take it to the meeting, she's gonna go, Harry, what do you think? Okay? We don't want that, we don't want, we want.
Well, you know, Jack, remember what we did in fall for the, the small area that was rezoned industrial? So I think we would do something similar where we have like existing proposed. You know, like in, a map showing.
You know, recipient friendly. Because they have to understand what you're talking about because.
We could, we could send out some notices to the, to the area residents. We could do it piecemeal.
And we have to hold the public hearing anyways before the town meeting. But.
We could have another public, just a public meeting, separate from what we would have to do, which we would do, which we have to do. But just to meet with people, have them come in, do a Saturday morning coffee, show them the maps. Make sure people are very aware that this is happening through any mechanism, Facebook, whatever postings we could possibly do to try to get as many.
Just like they did with, like the, the master plan. Like gathering that information, even with like now the fire department. Like having the fire station informational sessions. I think that's probably a great idea and I think it would be best over spring and summer. To bring people out.
Yeah, and then get it ready for the fall. That's right.
So we'll look at zoning map for fall. And try to do some info sessions. Okay, so we're gonna have to get that onto our, um, planning board goals and bring that once a month. So we can keep that in the back of our minds, not to forget. Um, the other item.
I won't forget, cause I need it.
I think we all do. You know, residents, I think residents who are dealing with that issue will understand and wanna see a result as well. So the other one is the stormwater. We had, we had a draft from environmental partners. It was sent to Serpide. Serpide's been working on it. They sent us a draft back. I know you had some comments. DPW director was gonna look at it. I know we haven't seen feedback from Nate yet, but I did speak to him. He. He didn't wanna be the authority.
Oh yeah, it wouldn't make him the author, he wouldn't be the authority.
So he was saying planning board should, does that make sense?
Yeah, it, 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 so I didn't know, so, so this is me not, not having enough knowledge about who's doing what already. So I did try to reach out to conservation through the new conservation agent. But he's part-time, so I, I did not hear back from him in time for tonight. If they, see, because they're doing one sixty Bedford Street, I'm wondering, do they already do stormwater? And, and I mean, in towns, it's, it can be one or the other, but obviously it can't be both. There has to be an authority. They can't not be someone that, that takes responsibility for it.
We have always done stormwater with our peer review.
So yeah, so I mean, planning board, because they do site plan review, it's more natural for you to take that on. But I just didn't want to inhibit or, or step on, on conservation's toes if this was something that they had already been doing. And I didn't know enough to say, yeah, well, if they're doing it already, then they should already, they should continue doing it and. You know, I hope, I think you know what I'm trying to say. I just wanna make sure it's where it's supposed to be, but it just has to be somewhere. That I know. And I guess that could be something that, I don't know if that's something that you need to converse with, with conservation with. Or if it's something that you feel like you can make a decision on. We could ask them again, like maybe Nancy Yates.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the harm in just throwing it out there and say, you know, we were considering have a planning board. You have an issue with that and, and what they say.
Yeah, okay.
But other, other than that, he also said, um, what he already deals with is. The illicit discharge that, so he wants to make sure that that is speaking to or. In conjunction with the stormwater.
Who is that? Is that, is that Nate W? Nate, he does illicit as well? Okay, so we can, can somehow put something in there to make sure that he has some oversight when it comes to illicit discharge?
I think he want, so I think he was gonna send it along so that it can be. Sent to Serpide to make sure that it's speaking with it correctly and not, not going against it in any way.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, and I didn't get any other comments back yet from, from anyone else. So I can reach out to them, you know, one more time, send it back to Serpide to finalize it.
Yeah, I, I take your comments, send it back to Serpide, get another copy and then when you get another draft with whatever else they come back. Then send it around and we can, I think that one's good to move forward with.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay, so, so tonight we're gonna. Send over placeholders to the select board. And I have ADU, site plan review, review and stormwater for spring. So now there was, now Nancy just gave him a laugh. So for fall, we had sent placeholders to the select board. There's like an internal process that we kind of missed. We held the public hearings and then right before town meeting, we actually had to hold a meeting to. Vote to send them to the select board, not just as placeholders. So we wanna just make sure we don't skip that.
I, I, I think Tracy has already come down to talk to me. I had already asked Lil, like what your process is so that I'm familiar with it as well. So I have all the paperwork and. And we'll, we'll get that, that going through you. I, I used, I'm used to a form that gets passed around back and forth. And I can show, I could, I could show Lil that to see if that's something that she would be interested in. So we send it to the select board. Each one gets its own cover sheet. The select board signs off, sends it back to you. You sign the sheet and then that's documentation. Um, that you send back to the select board and the select board sign it so that it goes onto the warrant. I know it sounds cumbersome. But that paperwork can travel to the AG's office that show it went through the proper steps. Exactly how it's supposed to and know, like sending back for.
Last minute meeting on a Friday afternoon or whatever it was. Yeah, so, um.
So we'll take a look at that as well.
So for this evening though, we can, we'll request placeholders for these three items. Some of you wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to send placeholders to the select board for spring town meeting for ADU, stormwater and site plan review.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, all in favor?
Wilga, aye.
Make hacker nine.
Cabral, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Ojai.
Alright. Motion carries. We have site plan review application, possible vote. Another thing in our packet here. So this is what you were already talking about a little bit, Nancy. We have the application for site plan review. There's a whole checklist now that allows them to go through. So you've kind of.
I'm so excited.
I know, you've kind of already explained it.
I'm like, ah.
And no, this, so you don't.
It's so missing.
You don't understand. So we actually did a, a, a minor revision of the rules and regulations and I wanted to get the forms. But Kathy wasn't on board and it didn't, there was, you know.
It's, it's, it's genius, you know, getting that all together.
Yeah, there was some miss.
Yeah, cause you have to go in and make sure that you're catching all of them. There's a few new ones in there. I think they're all something very helpful. Wait till you get to the A and R. That one's like mine.
But, and I'm glad that we didn't revise the forms at that time because now we can just do it without having to revise. Which requires a public hearing.
This is just a vote.
Alright, so any questions, comments, concerns about this checklist? I went through it. It seemed pretty comprehensive and. Straightforward.
So it's four pages? Yeah, four pages. Yeah, it looks good.
And you basically just took this out of our rules and regs or?
Yep, I went through the line items.
Nice and simplified.
Alright, would someone like to make a motion to adopt this site plan review application?
Make a motion to adopt the site plan, um, application for site plan review.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, vote, all in favor?
Wilga, aye.
Make hacker nine.
Cabral, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Ojai.
Alright, motion carries.
And I'll bring back to you the A and R at the next meeting.
Excellent.
So it's, this is easy for me too, cause then I can take the application and the plan and then I can check it off and make sure that they have everything.
Are you gonna post these on the page, the webpage too? So I know, and, and that was the other thing, I think John had pointed out that the old rules and regs were still up there.
I took them down. And so they're still in not complete form.
Oh, really?
Yes, so that's something that.
Cause there were a few minor edits. I think we worked through that last meeting.
Me. So that I can get that up there.
Okay, I'll see if I can pull that out.
Cause I've been going by the, the old one as well, so I printed that out. So it'd be helpful for me to have the new one. So I'm, I'm not referencing something.
It was, it was minor revisions, you know, changing like the days that were wrong. I think it said fourteen days instead of twenty-one. So we changed all those. Anything that said highway director and now it's DPW. You know, just, it was kind of like the low hanging fruit that we could just do on our own. And there were some things that we went through with Kathy that she kind of, you know. Triggered to say that, you know, these items, so.
Happy to make those changes. They just need to know what they are.
I, I'll have to dig it out from my packet, like, cause I know I have like everything scribbled in. But, um, that'd be good to take it out there too. Alright, next item is administrative update. Ninety-two Holland Road, A and R decision. So you, uh, did include the little snippet. As requested. Um, I guess this just needs to be signed, right?
Absolutely. And, uh, the town clerk will get a copy as well as the applicant.
We'll wait for David then. Oh, do we need David's signature?
It is on the page. So when he comes back, he can sign it. On emergency, so.
And then we have for Marigold memo.
Um, that has gone to the, uh, ZBA who heard, who had this tonight as the public hearing opened. Um, and so they have your comments and they were grateful to, to get some feedback.
And then the thirteen Main Street. So this looks like we have the, yeah, the affidavit from the engineer as we had requested. And then you went out there as well.
So we were supposed to go out today, but they're rescheduled till, um, March tenth in the afternoon, so. We'll all be going out with Apex and, um, Zenith. And we'll take a look at the site based on the as-built and the original plans. So we've requested that they bring full copies, full-size copies of both, so that we'll have them on site. I also have sent copies over to Apex so they can take a look to see what they would be looking at. So if you look at the as-built, there are a few numbered items on there that were not. Were not, um, uh, uh, done according to plan. So if you have the as-built from the last meeting. Just take a look at that. It's number eleven on the, on the as-built sheet. And then I'm sure Apex will provide a report back.
Anything else under administrative that you have that just popped up or anything?
Um, I'm trying to think. It's been, it's been a whirlwind couple of weeks.
I bet. Welcome.
So yeah, I'm excited that you keep you busy and then.
I just don't wanna see, I don't, I don't wanna see you overloaded though either. So like if you have any concerns, please feel free to. Because we don't wanna lose you either. We don't want you to get burnt out or overburdened. You know, we wanna keep you happy.
I, I like that you're, 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 you're looking into what things need to change and that's so important and that you're willing. To take a look at the processes and, and willing to make those changes is really helpful to me as well. Um, I see areas where we can make great improvements and strides for all of you to make good decisions when these things come before you. And then back it up with, they can show that it's done according to plan.
Right, and that'll make the, the process for this board so much easier too, you know.
Yeah, and, and you know, in the backside too, I'll be in telling you about what's going on on the construction side. When things are getting, you know, if there's anything that looks like they might be having to come back for a modification or things like that. And those things are important for you to know, that, that those things should happen on the backside. It happens. You know, sometimes they do, or they run into something that is unanticipated. But knowing that we're partners in the, the final product is, is just as important as what they're doing is to, to you as well, so. I look forward to that part of it as well.
Me too. Volatir, that's, that's so important.
And I'm glad you're, you're into it too.
It's a love fest. Alright, so we had a set of minutes on here, but we're gonna wait till next meeting for that. And then our next meeting is March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five here. Did, did you have anything? Okay. So no other business? We have a motion to adjourn?
One, one quick thing, one very quick thing. So, uh, meeting minutes that have been approved. I think we're up to October eighteenth. Do we have? Just wanna make sure that. Cause I have, um, I, I had one, um. Person reach out to me and said, do you know more has been posted yet? So I, I know that there's a lot going on.
And I know the town administrator's been keeping track of it too.
And, and I don't think, you know, Kathy has to be the only one that can post them. I can post them. And I think there's others in the building that would be willing to help as well to get those done. Thank you.
I mean, we're much farther than we were, so, but, um, I, yeah.
We, we certainly don't wanna get caught from the AG's office and get a letter. So get those up there, cause it is important that we are posting them. People like to read what happened.
You know that someone from down on, um. Pinecrest, um. We talked to the, I forget, I can't think of the industry right now.
So yeah, so I did get another, um, contact from the neighbor. He's concerned about, um, the section outside of his, his property and the driveway. I did contact the developer. He said he would get out and take care of that as well. I'll follow up early next week.
That road's supposed to get paved, the person eventually, but obviously they're not doing it now, cause it's just, it's all broken.
And the rumble strip needs to be installed too for when he starts to, to get construction underway. That would be the first thing I would require. Cause I don't want trucks coming in and out on that protection. Part of the road, it really, it would really require that. So he, he, he says he will do it and I will check in next week to see if something has been done to help with the, with the frontage of his property as well.
Yeah, now that, now that's thawed, it's thawing out now, so.
There was about, um, two or three feet of frost in the ground. In other sites, not, not here, but in other towns right next door. So, yeah, that was the report out that there were, there was that much frost.
We haven't had that in a while.
Past couple of years has been. Very warm and mild, but. We had, we had some winter here.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion in a second. Roll call, all in favor?
Wilga, aye.
Cabral, aye.
Meeting is adjourned.